I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one hundred and fifty.
Gotta get the kids back in.
The town of Burlington will be holding the November eighteenth meeting of the Planning Board as a hybrid meeting due to the expiration of the state of emergency that was issued to the nineteen virus on March twelfth, two thousand twenty. Please note that the option for remote participation via WebEx is being provided as a courtesy to the public. This meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems disrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Those seeking to participate remotely may do so via the following. You can join our WebEx meeting, townofberlingtonwebex.com. Our meeting number is two three four five six zero nine four one zero three. The password is sixteen forty-five. You may also join by phone at six one seven three one five zero seven zero four. You can watch this broadcast on the AT- Government Channel, Comcast ninety-nine, RCM fifty, and Verizon Channel forty-one. It's also being put live on the AT- Facebook page.
The public will be able to make comments during the hearing. At the time for public comments, questions can be asked via WebEx, the WebEx chat function, and the Facebook Live chat function during this meeting. All persons wishing to ask a question or make a comment, please identify themselves ahead of time.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take items seven G and seven H together and out of order for discussion purposes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item G is a public hearing. Application for approval of a special permit pursuant to one point five point one light manufacturing of the Burlington Corporate Center Plan Development District Bylaws, Ten Corporate Drive, the Gutierrez Companies, the applicant. Item H is a public hearing. Application for approval of a special permit pursuant to one point five point two point one point five point two A. Laboratories engaged in research development, experimental and testing activities in such fields as biology, chemistry, and medicine of the Burlington Corporate Center Plan Development District Bylaws, Ten Corporate Drive, the Gutierrez companies, the applicant.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, Robert Buckley, Raymond Bernstein. I have with me this evening Scott Weiss from the Gutierrez Company, the applicant. I'd like the indulgence of the chair to open the hearing and take no testimony. It came to our attention that the link on the notice, which is provided as a convenience that's not legally required, was malfunctioning or corrupt or whatever the word is in technology. The notice itself, under Mass. General Laws, Chapter forty-eight, Section eleven, is sufficient. It just has to provide the time, location, description, and property identification, and that was done. But in the event that someone wanted to review the plans, we'd like to give them the opportunity to go online and look at the plans if they want, or the application. So if we could, we would just like to continue to the next meeting.
Absolutely.
Oh, by the way, what we will do is we want to take to send out a letter to the, I guess, the statutory notice recipients indicating that, you know, they could either go on the new link to see the application, or alternatively, the plan, the application is on file with the planning board staff. I'd point out, too, that even though the message came up on your website that the webpage was not correct, it directed you to the Planning Board's homepage, I guess, is that what you call it? Which had a list of all the pending applications. So you could have gotten there, but out of a courtesy to the individuals, I think we'll just allow them to do that.
Understood. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue these matters to the Planning Board meeting of December second, two thousand twenty-one, as requested by the applicant in an email dated November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a great holiday.
Thanks, John. Happy Thanksgiving.
If any audience member in the hearing room wishes to speak, please come up to the table on your left and identify yourself for citizens' time. For those participating remotely, please raise your hand and speak and identify yourself. If you would, please.
And can I ask those that are on WebEx to mute yourself if you're not speaking and you'll be recognized by the chairman? Thank you.
I guess I first should ask your permission as far as speaking, because I was going to speak to what was just discontinued to Ten Corporate Drive. Should I hold back anything I was going to say until then?
Will you be attending next meeting?
I'm gonna give it a try, yeah, that's my plan.
If you want to make a brief statement, we'd be happy to hear you.
Yeah, it's a brief.
I'd rather, you know, take everything all at the same time, but, you know, while you're there.
Yeah, I have a brief statement, you know, if you're okay with that.
I'm okay with that. If you'd please introduce yourself, please.
Oh, yeah. My name is James McNiff. I live at fifty-nine Village Wood Drive, and I'm part of the planned district development that the proposal of Ten Corporate Drive for the two special permits is part of. And I'd like to, I've been studying a lot about hazardous material and all the other bylaws in the history of what's going on in Burlington, and what I'd like to make a comment about is how successful you have been in bringing life science to Burlington. Because as I went through the years since two thousand sixteen, when you had Millipore Signet come on board, and then up to today, the way I calculate, and I could be off by a few, but you have, Burlington has close to five million square feet of life science, which is either in production or about to go into production. It's so it's tremendous job going from that point to where you are today in getting those particular businesses into the town. Now, when I did some analysis of it, there was the value of the properties, or I come up to over two hundred million dollars of the properties that make up the five million square feet, and has a very large tax base, I would assume, based on the percentage. So it meets the needs of that, of bringing a viable economy and income into Burlington. I do know how, part of it is the story of how it happened to get to where it is, besides the leadership of the town in doing it, was I know from Millipore, who's here tonight talking about, I think about a container, I was here at the last meeting, that they started the ball rolling when they moved out of Billerica, moved here. They had, they are given a fifteen percent exemption on their taxes for fifteen years, but we gave them the opportunity and the land, the perfect spot, actually, for the lab, which is, kind of leads to why I feel Ten Corporate Drive is not the spot, in a way. If you look at the, I think the other critical point of the history of Burlington getting to where it is today is the recent changes you've made to the zoning laws, where you've made it now by right, where if, based on the IH designation, that if a company or a life science were to buy that property, they don't have to go through a special permit. They, by right, they're able to build their labs, which if the Board of Health approves it, you know, and it's all meets the safety standards, to me, that seems fine. Which brings me to where I am now on Ten Corporate Drive. Ten Corporate Drive is not typical of anyone I've just established. Ten Corporate Drive is in a planned district development. It is in the residential area. None of the, none of the other sites have homes within a hundred yards of where they're planning to possibly, now, I don't know the permit, that's what I'm saying, I'm jumping a little bit ahead, but I would think the second part of the permit they're requesting is to do lab work, which is to bring chemicals and other bio-science experiments into that lab, which has been typical so far of all the labs that Burlington has worked with, not just manufacturing that part. So assuming they were going to do that, and they were going to build, bring in hazardous materials, substances, and then exit with hazardous materials similar to all the other sites, I would think it'd be inappropriate to have it in a, in a site that has residential community, which I said, part of that is the new, the reserve, which has two hundred and seventy apartments, which I don't know how many number of people, got to be three to four hundred people right now, that are less than a hundred yards from that building, because I walked that building almost every day since the pandemic, because there's no else to walk. You know, I walked through that whole parking lot regularly. And so that would be part of it.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Okay, sure.
This is an item we just continued. It's on our agenda. We, if it's an open hearing, we have to give the, both sides the opportunity to speak. If we want to talk globally about things we've been doing in Burlington and globally about concepts of lab and life science, that's totally fine, but as we get specific with Ten Corporate, unless we allow both sides to respond, it's, we need to wait till the public hearing.
Right. Mr. McNiff, I appreciate your concern. You know, a lot of the statements, again, that being a specific property, we are kind of jumping the gun, because we don't know what they're going to be presenting. We don't know, you know, it's, it's all assumption. So I would like, you know, if you would, attend next meeting, when we do have a public hearing, and you can finish, you know, addressing your concerns.
Could I ask one just clarification? I'm not, this is not where they have to be here or respond. I guess it's the reason it's at the Planning Board, and they're, they're putting through a special permit. Is this going through the traditional Planning Board review where the town meeting would have to approve? Or is this going through the by rights way, which gets the Board of Health? Because it seems to be there are two ways.
It's by right.
Uh, no, uh, no. We're here for a special permit in the Plan Development District. Corporate Drive is the first Plan Development District. It's a special permit. That's why they're here in front of you.
Okay.
And I certainly welcome any comments that you might have to submit to the Planning Department. We can certainly get them out from, through the department to the members prior to next meeting, if there's things you want to submit.
Okay, that'd be great.
And then we certainly can have a discussion during the open hearing.
Okay, appreciate that. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you for your interest.
Does anyone else have any general comments, questions, concerns? Anyone? What do you got?
I just wanted to say, I think it would be appropriate for the Planning Board, when one of our companies receives special recognition, to recognize that, in some effect, even maybe send them a note from the Planning Board congratulating them. And recently, Everbridge wins Top Tech Award, and it's a very important award, Top Tech Fifty Companies of Massachusetts, and so forth. And I'm very proud when one of our companies is recognized in that way, and I think it would be nice for the Planning Board to do that also, and just say, "The Planning Board wishes to congratulate you on your being awarded this award and so forth."
I think that's great. Great idea. Thank you. Thanks for sharing.
Liz, can we move on to announcements, please?
Sure. Thanksgiving holiday is coming up, November twenty-fourth. Town offices will close at three o'clock, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, and will reopen the following Monday, November twenty-ninth. The ZBRC subcommittee has a meeting on November twenty-ninth at five thirty via Zoom. The Sculpture Park Subcommittee meets December seventh at eight fifteen a.m. And the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee's next meeting is December eighth at six thirty p.m. via Zoom.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just wanted to take a moment to thank a local vendor, Bob Novola Lighting and Landscaping. As some of you may have noticed, Mr. Novola very generously installed lighting in the Sculpture Park. Very subtle, soft uplighting for each sculpture.
That's great.
You'll notice it on the way out when you go tonight.
Looks great.
Notice it on the way in. It looks great. So I wanted to mention that very generous donation and invite everyone to take a drive by tonight. It looks great. Thank you.
Beautiful. Very soft lighting.
Yes.
Very cool.
Very classy.
Very cool.
Yes, so thank you to Bob Novola.
Great. Thank you. We do not have any legal notices of interest. Moving on, item A. Item A is an application for endorsement of a plan believed not to require hurdle for Maureen Drive. G and T Homes LLC is the applicant.
So this is an A and R application that we have for you. Let me hand it out. It says, well, Kristen, I don't have to migrate anymore.
She'll just talk as she walks. It's an A and R application. It came in this, this week on Maureen Drive. It's a large lot on Maureen Drive. It has the proper frontage on a built-out way. There are not any upland wetland questions. Maureen Drive is right next to the Pine Haven Cemetery, and the Pine Haven Cemetery expansion property, back there. There's a large, larger house on the property, kind of in the middle. I believe they're breaking into two lots. As you are aware, an approval not required plan requires that you have the appropriate frontage on a built-out way, which it does, and it also has the lot area required for two lots. I'm, I'm just having Liz check if the applicant was on, on. They didn't need to necessarily be on, as it's an approval not required, but.
Yes, we're here.
Oh, fantastic. Okay, no good.
No good.
Just wasn't trying to identify here. Small square up there. If you certainly want to speak about the.
But first, if you could identify yourself?
Yes.
For the record.
This is Timothy Quinn, one of the applicants. I think I'm showing up as Veronica Quinn on the computer, but, yeah, I believe we have substantial, you know, frontage and square footage to be able to create the second lot. So obviously, we're looking for an A and R. And your input.
Staff doesn't have any concerns with the proposal.
Great. Simon, have any questions, comments, concerns? May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make the motion to approve and sign an approval not required plan entitled "Approval Not Required for Maureen Drive in Burlington, Massachusetts, Middlesex County," prepared by Keenan Survey dated November third, two thousand twenty-one, reflecting the addition of a lot line, thereby turning one lot into two lots. The Planning Board finds that this is a proper submission of an approval not required plan, that the one hundred-foot frontage requirement has been met. The applicant shall submit four copies and an electronic PDF of the endorsed approval not required plan to the Planning Board office within four weeks of this approval. Proof of recording with the Registry of Deeds shall be provided to the Planning Department upon completion.
All those in favor?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you very much.
We do not have any administrative matters. We'll move on to matters of appointment. We'll be discussing some of the items that will be moving forward at January town meeting. I want to welcome the members of the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee and the Land Use Committee to join in the discussion of the warrant articles.
Madam Chair, I wonder if those that are on, many are on WebEx, if they could, if the chair of each committee could quickly recognize who is on the WebEx from those committees? That would be helpful.
Do you have my presentation? When did you, which did you send?
For land use, I'm Monte or Patricia. If you could identify who from your committees with us virtually.
I have cables.
Who virtually is with us from your committee? I see Monte Pierce and Patricia O'Brien.
Yes.
Can you identify anyone else you may see on the?
Dave Webb. If somebody else in the committee is here, then you should speak up.
Yes, Dave Webb. Three of us.
Okay, and then from Zoning Bylaw Review, could you, for those of you that are on, could you announce? I see Ed Parsons, Sally in-house. Now, Kathy Byer, anyone else? I just not, can't see, because we have the presentation up. Please announce yourself.
There's three of us. And Parsons and Kathy Byer. I think that's all of us.
Fantastic. Thank you, Zach. Thanks for joining this evening. Item A is a public hearing petition to amend the zoning bylaw, Article Two, definitions. Sign regulations should define and clarify sign regulations submitted as a zoning policy. Item B is a public hearing petition to amend the zoning act on a signed district for the town center submitted by the zoning bylaw review committee.
Good evening. Hello, and thank you for letting me present tonight and for opening our hearings.
Just identify yourself.
I'm Sally Willard, and I'm the chair of the signage subcommittee of the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee. I have a short presentation to talk about our articles. First, the purpose of the articles, then some recommendations, tell you who's on the team, background, our approach, and our two proposed articles. We're not proposing three articles, we're proposing two short articles. The problem is that we have different types of business areas that require different regulations. In Burlington, one size does not fit all. Today, our zoning bylaw has bylaws, the sign definitions and everything, one size fits all. We also operate from two sets of bylaws, the general bylaw as well as the zoning bylaw. Town center overlay has no signage regulations, and I know that you're addressing changes in occupants and what they're doing with their buildings, but we have no signage regulations in the design guidelines. Finally, the ZBA and the Building Department face significant issues, and a lot of issues concerning signs. Even in the town center overlay, all of the signs that people can put up are based on their underlying zone. Has nothing to do with the town center overlay and what the desire has been for that. Our solution is to update the zoning bylaw. Our recommendation is we're going to January town meeting, January two thousand twenty-two, with two articles. One is to add definitions that are related to the sign by, signs, but are not specifically And the other is to update the purpose of the sign bylaw. Our team, Ernie Covino has been representing the Planning Board, Mike Murray from the ZBA, ZBRC members, Betsy Hughes and Sherry Ellis, Mark Dupell and his predecessor before him, Inspector of Buildings. We have advisors. The International Sign Association has consulted with us and made recommendations on definitions and other items. The Planning and Economic Development Departments have given us assistance. We have business owners and leaders who have participated in our meetings, and we've also consulted with the town council. Our approach, our plan has been to break down into manageable chunks. We have a vision that we would have a sign bylaw that would treat different areas, different business districts, as if they were separate from everyone else, because in fact, they are. We have the town center overlay, we have a plaza on Route sixty-two, there's the Wind Street Business Development, we have the Mall Road and one twenty-eight, which is very different from those, Middlesex Turnpike, and so on. We have Ray Ave, A, B, and C Streets, Harris Hall. So they're all different business areas. Some of them are within, surrounded by residential areas. So we think that to give everyone a one-size-fits-all solution is just not right for the community or for the businesses. We have been reviewing, and we will continue to review and update signage definitions. We have been working on creating a signage district concept with different maps of the areas. We're not bringing that part forward for this town meeting, because there are still some kinks to work out. The town center signage district is going to be our first area of concentration, because that's already a defined overlay, and it's a manageable piece that people understand. Beyond that, we'll have additional districts, and eventually, we think that it would suit the town to have a complete signage bylaw that takes signage out of the zoning bylaw and the general bylaw, because those, those two bylaws, in some cases, don't match. The background. As I've said, sign bylaws currently exist in both zoning and the general bylaws, and this causes some confusion. Also, one size fits all. There have been many prior attempts. None of them quite came to completion. The last one, I believe, was in about two thousand and twelve. The ZBRC signage subcommittee was formed in January two thousand twenty, and we're still working at it, twice a month, almost every month. Our proposed warrant articles are, we have two. One is for zoning bylaw, Article Two, definitions, and the other is the zoning bylaw, Article thirteen, Section thirteen dot one. The definitions, these are new to zoning, but they're related to signage. Next one. Awning, continuous. When you think of an awning, you think of an awning right over one building or entrance. This would be something that is not just over one storefront, but may be over a building that has multiple storefronts. We're also defining a building front and a storefront, because those can be two separate things, a parapet and pedestrian scale. Those are in our, in the warrant article that is on here, Article Two, definitions. And then for Article thirteen, for signs, we are proposing to amend Section thirteen dot one by adding a purpose for the sign, for the bylaw, and removing the definition that's there. Article thirteen, the current, it currently, thirteen dot one dot O says, "For the purpose of this section, sign shall include any letter, word, symbol, drawing, picture, design, device, article, or object that advertises, calls attention to, or indicates any premises, person, or activity, whether the na, whatever the nature of material and manner of composition or construction."
Madam Chair, on my thing, that's all I know.
Yes, that's what we're replacing.
Oh, okay.
We're replacing that with a purpose, which we think is long overdue. Most of the articles in the zoning bylaw have a purpose, and those are listed. And with that, I thank you, and I'll take any questions.
So any questions, comments, thoughts?
You know, a while back, we had quite an extensive design review. I think you may have been part of that, but I mean, we did a lot of work looking at signs and so forth. So you're taking that, which is what we have now as a sign bylaw, and updating it.
Yes. That's our goal.
Okay. No, just want to make sure that, because it's pretty complete, so I was very involved. As you may know, thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions, comments, concerns?
Oh, it's exciting.
I think it's a great first step, and I thank you for taking it on.
Absolutely. We appreciate all your hard work.
Good luck.
Well, just one kind of quick thing. We have design regulations for the buildings in the, in the town center, specifically talking about the town center right now. And we actually, staff had put together a set of draft sign design regulations, but it never really, never really came to completion. So I would like and hope that this board could do some work on that, and also, the elephant in the room, the three A committee no longer exists, and I, from what I understand, it no longer even exists. it no longer even exists in the list of committees. So I'd like to have us think about proposing that it become, since it's not on paper anymore,
Sure.
and it's advisory to the planning board, why shouldn't it be a subcommittee of the planning board? And we would do the appointing of whoever should be on it since they advise the planning board.
I'm not opposed to that. Do we have any volunteers for our subcommittee? Or do we want to talk about this and maybe regroup for next meeting?
Talk about regroup.
Sounds good.
Got a heavy agenda in front of us. But I do think it's a good, it's a very good conversation and much needed, especially with this effort.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ernie. This is a public hearing. Does anyone from the public have any comments on this item?
Do you want to ask Land Use and zoning bylaw review first?
For sure.
They are the public.
Does Land Use or zoning bylaw have any comments that they'd like to make? Okay. This is a public hearing. Does anyone in the public have anything that they would like to add or contribute?
I'll raise my hand here.
Oh?
Monty.
Monty.
So Sally, I can't actually see you, but I'm assuming that you're still there. I'm going to ask you that this is the, what you're doing now is beginning the process, and these are the two preliminary things that you're doing?
Yes. We have been working on the greater sign bylaw, but without, without guidelines for the town center overlay, which was our first, our first signage district, without the guidelines, we just don't feel.
Don't feel that it's time to bring forth requirements.
When will you get the town center guideline?
I believe that will come from the planning, planning department and the planning board. That's what Ernie was just addressing.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Please.
So, so Monty, we, we had created a draft a couple of years back, probably more years than I want to admit. But when we first started talking about signage, especially signs at the town center, it was during the first round or the last round of discussion about signage. And it was kind of have them figure out what they're going to do, then we'll move forward. And anyway, things happened. But we certainly can open the public hearing for the town center design rules and regs to have that as a parallel conversation with the conversation that Sally's having as we move forward. And I think that's kind of what Member Cabino was getting at, to bring it up. So the design rules and regs, they are in draft. I think Sally has a draft of those. And what I said to Sally is we will entertain opening them, opening them sometime in January as we get through this initial discussion of the, this kickoff effort of this committee.
And why does the town center rules have to come first?
In the, in the bylaw, we can specify such things as the height and width, whatever that, you know, physical things. But we cannot specify style. Style is not something that should be in the, in the zoning bylaw, but that's something that the, that the town center overlay guidelines address.
But through, through the chair. They don't need to come first. It's just a parallel effort to make sure they both work together well. It, it's not a first or second. Usually, actually, zoning is first. Guidelines kind of follow. But since we have a draft, why not just start talking about them together?
I see. Okay. The second question then is, are we talking about eliminating the sign bylaw language that is in the general bylaws?
Monty, once the, all of the districts are defined, and that's not anticipated to be in the, in the next year or so. But once all of the various districts are defined, then we would consider proposing to make it a standalone bylaw.
So that can be asked?
Eventually.
Okay. I was just wondering, because you were talking about conflicts between the two, and I was assuming that you wanted to eliminate them by eliminating the general bylaw.
Eventually, that's the plan. It's easier said than done.
And why is that?
Because we have so many different districts in town. And as I said initially, one size doesn't fit all. So we'd like to be able to address the different needs of, say, neighborhood business districts as opposed to Middlesex Turnpike or the Mall Road. Because neighborhoods, neighborhood business districts are very different from those other ones.
Okay. And what will the legal status be of these various districts that you're creating?
Madam Chair, I really do appreciate the questions, and they're great questions, but they're really, what we're doing here is definitions and purpose. And I just want to make sure we're staying on task with the.
Thank you.
Piece by piece, you know, you can't eat an elephant all in one bite, is to get through this. That's all. Very good questions, though.
Thank you. So we'll hold off on some of those for our next meeting. Sherri, do you have your hand up?
I do. I wanted to just respond to Monty's first question because I think it was a little different than what Sally answered, and maybe it might help. You can hear me, correct?
Yes.
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Sorry. Monty, I think you asked why the town center signage was first. And one of the things that, that town council told us is, in order to do, make new definitions and make new signage regulations, we had to keep it within a certain confine. So we, that's how we determined that we were going to do this by signage districts rather than zoning districts. And so the town center has a lot of issues with it with signage. People, you know, have had complaints and things about that. And it's an already well-defined area. So that's why we started with that area first, and it's probably the most complicated. And we thought, once we, you know, took this manageable chunk, as we said, then the other districts will come into play a little bit easier. So that's kind of the, the process. So I just thought I'd throw that out there real quick.
Okay. And so all the districts have to be approved by town meeting as well?
Yes. They're all going to be individually approved, and then it's like a package. And when all the districts, which we don't even know yet how many of them there will be, then once that's all done, we can kind of combine all that, and there'll be one signage bylaw once we're all done.
Okay. Thanks, Sherri.
Thank you, Sherri.
Need a motion to continue?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter to the planning board meeting of December 2, 2021.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Item C is a public hearing, petition to amend the zoning bylaw, Article II definitions, Article IV use regulations, and Article VII general regulations to define and regulate retail, commercial, recreation, retail, entertainment, and education in experiential-type uses. Who's here this evening speaking on behalf of this matter?
So Melissa Tentaklas was here. She just had to jump off between 7:30 and 8:30. She just messengered us. So I'm going to just go through super quick. We went, did, went through this at the last meeting. I think a lot of zoning bylaw review members, hopefully Land Use members, watched our last meeting, but just wanted to give a quick update on both these matters. And first, and I apologize, I don't have news slides that Melissa might have, so I'll run through them super fast. So next.
So what we're doing here, as I mentioned last time, the one, when we did a lot of polling post-COVID, Melissa did a lot of outreach to businesses as to, you know, what is the thing that business, especially in retail, to bring retail back strong? Apparel, other types of retail, really is, we have over-retailed as we begin to see with the emergence of restaurants and other types of uses. And we kind of do this kind of informal poll of what's kind of the one thing, if we could do one thing quickly before we do this larger vision as we are working with mass development for Mall Road, Burlington Mall, that we could look at in the Bee Gees sector. It was kind of this experiential retail uses. Next slide. Next slide. When, what we're talking about here is both things that we have allowed in kind of more of the nonprofit or other than nonprofit educational uses. We do have ballroom dancing. We do have fitness in Burlington, but it's all, it's under these kind of really strange categories, like other than nonprofit use or educational uses or, yeah, it's mostly that, which, when you look at the bylaw, it's not obvious whatsoever. So when we're looking at, you know, these areas for kids to play, dancing, next slide. Again, more kids activities, Legoland, more kind of aquarium, even museum types are not super obvious. Museum of Ice Cream, which is the, you know, you jump into a ball pit of sprinkles and Instagram all your friends and put it on Facebook. Next. And then some of these really kind of interesting places that if you, if you Google Meow Wolf, and I'm sure people at home that are on their computer will be like, what is that? It's just this really immersive sight, sound, texture, feeling museum. It's like, it's, it's an artsy place, but it's like an arts for all of the experiences, sensations of a person. So it's, and learning. So they're really interesting places. And we want to try to encourage things like this. Right now, it's very hard. If you go to the Building Department and say, can I do this? It's like, eh, I don't know, maybe. And then we have this conversation back and forth for a month and a half, and then they go away and sign at least somewhere else. So we really want to try to capture these uses. And I, at the last planning board meeting, I think you guys were generally kind of thumbs up. One of the things that Melissa and I are trying to figure out a little bit is just making sure that when we talk about these types of uses and potentially other kind of, you know, a little bit more sports themes, they start to overlap with some other uses in our use table. And we just want to make sure that it's clear what is and what isn't in the different uses. So we're just, we're working on that. But overall, just wanted to present that. So that's all I have really for an update on that. And I know Land Use and zoning bylaw review are with us here and didn't know if they had any questions or wanted to have a conversation quickly with the board, with you guys here as well. So I handed it back to the chair.
Thank you, Kristin. So I think, you know, as you stated, both you and Melissa are still working on some of the questions or answering some of the questions that we had, things such as, you know, if they, they get this permit, how long the approval, how long the permit's going to last?
That's, I'm sure, suited.
Oh, that's, oh, it's very well. No, I'm sorry. You're right. On that one, I think that one was pretty straightforward. Thank you. Clearly, I'm not on my end tonight, folks. That one is pretty straightforward. Does anyone from the other committees have any comments, questions, concerns? Anyone? I don't see. Hand raised.
Board members, so the public? Nope. Anyone from the public? Okay. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter to the planning board meeting of December 2, 2021.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Moving along.
Just quickly, I know you voted, but quickly on this. At your meeting of December 2, what we are sending to town meeting, we do need to kind of make those motions. So if there is anything between now and then on any of these articles, please let us know, and we can try to work that out. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Item D is a public hearing, petition to amend the zoning bylaw, Article II definitions, Article IV use regulations, Article VIII overlay districts, Article miscellaneous and special regulations to define and regulate outdoor seating and placemaking issues submitted by the select board.
So for this, this is the, really to try to figure out a way to allow outdoor seating. Melissa had a wonderful presentation at the last, the last meeting. Again, I hope those, many of you tuned into it. The questions that came out of, so basically, so this is a regulation to allow for outdoor seating, seasonal approval, approval through the Building Department, through the Building Inspector. The questions that came up at the last meeting were the approval length of time, three years versus three seasons versus one year, temporary under the zoning bylaws, one year, and how that should be renewed. Also, we talked about parking requirements. Should we have parking requirements for these? Should we not? Distance from parking areas? How do we want to be calculating parking and need for parking, as well as safety and barriers and such things as like heating sources, from heating sources and fire pit safety? One of the things Melissa and I have been talking quite a bit about is we had, she had created with the task force a list of guidelines for temporary activities that we were doing through COVID. It was very good to begin with, and it outlined the process of approval through the temporary task force. It outlined the guidelines of if you're going to do this, if you're going to do these types of things or these types of tents or these types of heating sources, these are the things you need to do through the fire department. This is what you can have, what you can't have, as well as a bit of, a bit of, a bit of design. But as you know, COVID was, you know, kind of fast and quick and get out there, just save your business. And I think what we're looking for is to have a little bit more standardized guidelines of barriers and other, other things like that. So what she, what she was, I was hoping to present a little bit more tonight was a little bit more on that as well as a review of the process. But what I can say in the interim is I know she's working on that. And what I was hoping to have between this meeting and next meeting is, one, to have more information on that. And two, what I would suggest is those of you that would like to work with us on those, the zoning as well as accompanying regulations to figure out kind of how this will land. I think we should probably set up a subcommittee of this board. So, and as well as anyone from Land Use and zoning bylaw review who would like to join us to work, to help Melissa and I work on this language, figure out these regulations and process to see if we will be ready for January.
I would be happy to join those efforts. Is there anyone else on the board that like, that would like to assist in those matters?
I'll do it.
No. You said it.
We will be, if we have a meeting. And I know between now and December 2, I mean, we have Thanksgiving in between, so it's going to come up, it's going to be like tomorrow.
Sure.
So we'll do our best.
Sure.
To try to get there. But definitely, subcommittee needed to hash out some of these specifics.
Long as it's not next week, because I'm hosting and I have to cook.
It's not next week.
Question for clarification.
Sure.
So if this article goes to town meeting, it's not geographically specific at the moment. Am I correct? So it'd be anywhere in town or?
Correct, anywhere in town.
Okay. Thank you.
But as well as what I mentioned before, anyone who has additional questions, clarify anything, please let us know. So when the subcommittee meets, we can take all of these questions from all of those of you sitting here, all of those virtually, to try to, you know, just figure out what we need to figure out. I'll ask these.
Yeah, well, I was going to ask the other committees, if anyone else had to go. Does anyone have any questions or concerns, comments? It looks like Sherri's raising her hand.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just going to say, I will send out an email to the zoning bylaw review to see if anybody wants to be on the subcommittee, if that's okay. And I'll email that to Kristin.
That would be great.
Okay.
Anyone from the public have any comments on this item? Seeing no one. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter to the planning board meeting of December 2, 2021.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you. Moving on, item E is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 4.2.6.2, 4.2.6.20.1 Massage Therapy of the zoning bylaws, 169 Bedford Street. Three Little Birds is the applicant. If you, if you'd like to move to the front.
Okay.[1794.35]
Would you introduce yourself for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Kelsey Bevis.
Hi, Kelsey.
Hi, and I'm Jessica Padalina.
Good evening, Jessica.
Okay, the proposed location would be the Bedford Street Plaza at 165 Burlington Street. There is a walk-in area with a reception desk, a waiting area with a few chairs to be six feet apart, two massage rooms, a restroom and a storage area. The office space is 865 square feet, and will receive a fresh coat of paint and modern furniture. The parking lot will provide more than enough parking for the five spaces needed at a time. The signage will take place in a couple of sides of the building with natural colors. The one massage therapist on staff is Jessica. She was a Burlington resident and happy to be working back in town. At the age of 10, Jessica's father passed away. He was a fan of the musician Bob Marley, and Three Little Birds was the last song they sang together. Since then, Jessica has devoted her life to helping others live their best life, reducing stress. She graduated from Salter School of Massage and has worked for various salons and spas. I myself am a business management major from UMass Lowell and an avid massage fan. So please help us deliver our promise to the local residents and businesses of Burlington to help them don't worry about a thing because every little thing is going to be all right. So that's sort of our story. If anybody has any questions for either one of us, please let us know.
Or staff, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
Um, the only comment is just to orient everybody, this is in the plaza with Burlington's famous pizza, if that is helpful to those of you that are online or in the room. But other than that, staff has no concerns about this application.
Sure. Does anyone have, from the board, have any questions, comments, concerns?
I love the name.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Does anyone from the public have any comments on this item? Does Sherry still have her hand up from before, or is this something new?
Sorry, I'll put it down.
Um, I don't see anybody from the public with their hand raised.
Sherry wants a massage. Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Madam Chair, I would further like to make a motion to approve the request of Three Little Birds for special permit pursuant to section 4.2.6.20.1 Massage Therapy of the Town of Burlington zoning bylaws to permit the operation of a massage therapy spa within the existing 865 square foot tenant space to be known as Three Little Birds for a property located in the general business district at 165 Bedford Street, subject to the terms and conditions contained in Exhibit A attached.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Welcome to Burlington.
Thank you.
Welcome back to Burlington.
Thank you so much.
Good luck.
When you open to open?
As soon as possible. I think we already signed the lease.
I believe there's a appeal period and we should be open shortly after that, really.
Great.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Fly away, Three Little Birds.
See you soon.
Okay, next up, item F is a public hearing, application for approval of a site plan, 75 Middle 6 Turnpike, Burlington Mall. LT Burlington Leasehold Lord &amp; Taylor is the applicant. Who's here on behalf?
Can I just ask overall, are they going to, are they redoing this whole building where Lord &amp; Taylor is?
Well, I think we'll, I'm sure, I'm sure he'll tell us.
That's a good question.
I'm sorry.
No, but I didn't, I was trying to get whether they were redoing this as a building as it is now. But it appears to me this is going to be, you know, half a dozen businesses.
Um, well, let's, let's see what they have to present.
Thank you.
You should ask.
That's what we're.
We got the right people to answer.
I can't help it. I'm always.
I'm sorry. Good evening. Would you please introduce yourself for the record? Did you introduce the public here?
Did you read it aloud?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Madam Chair and members of the board, for the record, my name is Peter Tam of Goulston and Stores on behalf of the applicant LT Burlington Leasehold LLC, which is a code for Hudson's Bay Company. With me, from Hudson's Bay is Mito Dos, who's the Vice President of Real Estate Development at HBC, as well as his colleague Jose Gonzalez, who's a Senior Director, also in the Real Estate Development Group, as well as Diego Villarreal, who's the Project Engineer from JMC. We're all remote and we appreciate a few minutes of your time this evening. I think we can answer the gentleman's questions about exactly what the scope of this project is, who Hudson's Bay is, and why we're here. I'll quickly summarize, and we'll keep this very efficient so that we can answer your questions and any from the public.
Stay a few minutes.
So Diego will be driving the presentation here. I hope you all can see this.
Yes. So I, so, okay, so if Diego's going to present, I just wanted to make.
I did not need to present in the hearing.
Is that okay? I'll share my screen.
So for the record, and Hudson's Bay Company, through an affiliate, has a long-term ground lease on a portion of the Burlington Mall, just the Lord &amp; Taylor building, which is about 120,000 square foot retail building. As you know, that building is vacant, and we're here this evening to discuss with the board some preliminary planning for repositioning that building. By repositioning, we're talking about reuse of the building. And we're seeking the board's flexibility to expand the types of uses for tenants that might be interested in occupying the building. It could be a single tenant, it could be multiple tenants. But as you know, it's historically been an anchor to the mall. And as the town contemplates with Simon, the owner, potential future uses in reimagining the mall, this is an important element of that repositioning of the entire retail center. Hudson's Bay has, and Mito Dos can, can tell you more about this, but they have a lot of, a solid track record in doing just this. And what we're looking for from the board is when we share our plans, preliminary plans with you, we're looking essentially for a pre-permitting approval, essentially the ability to market this building to tenants other than retail tenants, specifically for office, potentially for some, some ancillary uses to the office, such as retail and potentially food and beverage. If we do find a tenant that is interested in having a food and beverage component, we recognize that unlike office, that would be subject to a separate special permit, which we would not seek unless that use is deemed desired. So with that as a brief introduction, we think we can keep this pretty simple. Essentially, what we're looking for is an acknowledgement from the board that repositioning the building for a mix of uses, principally office with some ancillary uses, is an appropriate use of this building. We have submitted traffic study as well as a memo and support. We have gone through and had the benefit of getting staff comments. But with that, I'll turn it over to Mito to briefly introduce Hudson's Bay, what their goals are here. And he in turn will, will turn it over to Diego to talk a little bit about the site and, and what, what we hope to accomplish here. Thank you.
Can't hear you, Mito.
My apologies. I'm used to Zoom. Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for your time. Truly appreciate you having us in front of you today. We're, a little bit about Hudson's Bay. Hudson's Bay is one of the few operating, continuously operating companies in the, in North America for over 350 years. And, you know, part of what we operate is not necessarily just retail, as in Hudson Bay or Saks or Lord &amp; Taylor before we divested of it. But we also operate a slew of portfolio of real estate assets, you know, situated across primarily North America as well as in Europe. The way that we approach the asset may be a little bit different than other developers, where we actually study what the asset needs. And what we have is a successful track record of converting these assets into, you know, multi-use that basically stand and withstand the test of time. We were very successful in Bedust Row, we're very successful in Centener Row, as well as, you know, multiple others. In here, what we're seeing is a shift in the, in the mall business, if you will, altogether, you know, from retail to almost a mixed use. What we're trying to do is basically just an office component to help support the mall as well as not compete with the other users from a retail perspective with the mall. We have a very strong track record of engineering, the, the properties and creating the space to truly work well with adjacent tenancies. And with that, I'll turn it to Diego in order to walk you through the, the space as well as the studies.
Thank you, Mito. Good evening, everybody. Just again, for the record, my name is Diego Villarreal. I'm an engineer with JMC, we're the planning and engineering consultants working with the applicants. Just to build on what Mito had been speaking about, you know, when we've worked with Mito and Jose and Peter on this, we've actually worked on several locations. And, you know, they have several locations throughout the eastern coast, and we're working on a number of them to try to, as the first line says, reinvigorate. It's an underutilized space right now in the op, and we're trying to create these opportunities to bring in a diverse mix of uses into reoccupy this state, this space. The days of, you know, single tenants for these large 120,000 square foot spaces, they're few and far between. It's, it's, it's important that we start thinking outside the box and try to come up with concepts to reactivate and reuse these spaces. And creating that diversity of uses within it is, is one of the directions that obviously we're heading in. So they're looking to introduce, again, the office uses that complements the existing retail, restaurant, and service uses at the mall, and then also maintain a small portion of the building as a retail and in restaurant use, maybe a food and beverage, something in that nature. And another goal that was established is really to have a limited impact on the site plan and the infrastructure. We're not looking to expand the existing building, make changes to the size and the footprint. It's really to work within the box that's there, work with the existing utility infrastructure that supports the building, the parking that is there, and try to work within those different constraints and not have an impact on a site plan where that requires significant changes or significant upgrades to utilities. So with that, going to just dive a little bit deeper into the existing conditions on the site and what's out there now. Here's some photos of the existing building, and you can see, obviously, I know you're all very familiar with it, the large walls, limited windows, it's really limited to the access points for the building itself. Otherwise, it's a continuous brick wall with the signage for the building. This zooms in on the aerial just a little bit tighter, shows you the location of the existing Lord &amp; Taylor space, and then the red line around is the lease space. That's the lease parcel that's associated with the Lord &amp; Taylor use. And you can see quickly, it encompasses some of the green areas that's around the buildings, and we'll touch on that in just a few moments. The building entrances are the existing north and south sides of the building that provide access to the two main parking fields, those surface parking fields. And then obviously there's that connection, direct connection to the mall space itself. Again, the proposed uses that are included in this application is that office use, which is predominantly the use that's being proposed. It's about 85% of the space. About 10% of it is dedicated to retail and then 5% to food and beverage. The modifications would involve, you know, obviously interior modifications to accommodate the different uses within the building. And then one of the big things that's important to the group is to do a window installation. We saw the pictures of the facades of the building, large brick facades, no natural light and air that comes into these buildings. So they are looking at making modifications to the facade of the building to do window penetrations on all sides. Again, all geared towards bringing natural light and ventilation into the building as well. And again, just to reiterate, no material impact on infrastructure, sewer, water, traffic especially. And we're going to touch on that in just a moment as well. This is just a generic floor plan that the architect put together. He's not with us this evening, but, or is he in or on? I wasn't sure. But this is the floor plan that's here. And just to give you an idea of how we could potentially break down the spaces within the building, this is the first floor of the building, and you'll see the green space. Again, 85% of it is dedicated to the office use. A small component, 5% would be dedicated to the food and beverage use, and then 10% to the retail space itself. The second floor of the building, again, was contemplated as office space. That makes up the balance of the 85% that we were talking about. So when you look at it, that second floor is really being dedicated to that office use. We did include a traffic and parking analysis in our submission to the board. It included a trip generation characteristic comparison to the existing uses. And what it continues to show is that the office use, when you introduce those office uses into the mix with the retail and restaurant uses, office is generally a lower generator of traffic. So when you compare it to a retail use, we're experiencing a substantial decrease in anticipated traffic, especially during those peak PMs and the peak Saturday hours. The morning is a little bit different, obviously, because retail is primarily closed in the morning, and office is a traffic generator in the morning. You do see the increase during the morning. But again, it's during a time where the balance of the mall or majority of the mall is closed, with the exception of a few stores. So you don't see a significant increase in traffic when you're looking at an overall picture with the mall itself. We also looked at the parking. Obviously, the office use has a lower requirement from a parking standpoint for your code. So when we add the additional office uses, we're not proposing to eliminate any parking spaces. We're just trying to demonstrate that based on your ordinance and based on your code, the parking requirement is less. We don't require any additional, we're not bringing in uses that it's going to require additional parking based on your ordinance. And really, the, the big takeaway is no overall negative impact on traffic operations between the parking spaces and the traffic operations and the use, and uses that are being proposed with the office space taking a majority of the space. It's really not anticipated to have any adverse impact. So again, just to, you know, the summary is, it's conversion of a single retail tenant to mixed use, including office, retail, and restaurant spaces, trying to revitalize the existing vacant space, diversify the different uses within the building. Everything that we're proposing is consistent with existing zoning strategies. Everything is permitted by your code and by your ordinance. We're not trying to do anything outside of what's permitted by your code. And again, we don't feel that what we're proposing has any material impact on the site plan or the existing infrastructure that supports the mall. It's all very consistent with what is out there right now. And that really brings us to the end. Happy to answer any questions, comments that you might have specific to this. Peter, I'll turn it back to you if there's anything you want to say in closing here, but happy to answer any questions at this point in time.
Just in summary, Madam Chair and members of the board, what Diego has summarized is, is accurate. This is, from, from the board's perspective, this is a little different in that we're before you for site plan, but from the traditional site plan considerations, there really are no new impacts. So we're really here to preview with you some potential additional uses to provide the long-term asset owner the ability to bring this to market for office users. So, but again, from all the traditional characteristics and considerations that you would have on your checklist, whether it be traffic or parking or infrastructure or building modifications, drive aisles, pedestrian realm, all of that is remaining unchanged. We're simply here to, to consider the ability to re-tenant this principally for an office use. And, and we've shown food and beverage here acknowledging that if we. And, and we've shown food and beverage here acknowledging that if we need a special permit for such a use, we would return and seek that special permit. But we've shown it here just out of a, frankly, out of a, the ability to be very direct and also consider it for traffic purposes. So happy to discuss and interested in getting the board's comments and reaction.
Staff, do you have any comments? Or start with you folks?
Sure. Well, Lord &amp; Taylor has been here since 1986, is that correct?
1978.
1978, oh man, 42 years.
Where am I going to get my dresses now?
Exactly.
Best dressed.
Where are we going to go get ready for the prom? Anyway, 1978, Burlington Mall was built 1968. But anyway, we have seen, you know, some change, but not much in the time it's been there. So I think it's exciting that they're here now before they have a specific tenant. I mean, all too often, we see people, once they have a tenant and then it's all tenant-driven and what do they need? And I think it's exciting now that they're here. I mean, as you guys have been involved in the discussion about repositioning the mall and what's happening in the big box stores and just what we were just talking about, the experiential kind of uses. But anyway, so they're here very much, from what I understand, is it's repositioning the space, going out to market, bringing in different uses. But also, they're here as Hudson Bay Company with Streetworks for the Lord &amp; Taylor site. And I think some of the things we should get out of this conversation is really the goals for this evolution of this place. I mean, they're talking about food and other retail uses and office, but I mean, you have this big box, blank wall, non-pedestrian scale kind of place that is a big box retail store. So how can we start to think about, and they certainly have as a company, thought about how to really change and evolve these type of spaces to have it more street scale? What's that curb appeal almost? I know they have like barely kind of right on the edge of the parking lot, but still, there's a lot you can do from your front door to your front walk to really make this space more engaging, more engaging to the outside world around it. You know, hopefully, when we get into talking about outdoor seating and other restaurants, we can talk about outdoor seating even before that, outdoor seating spaces that might just be common spaces. But what I hope to do with the conversation with you guys and with, or with the board and with the applicant is to really identify some of those goals for this space as it evolves, as they get a tenant in. Especially if there's some by right tenants and they start to change the building, you start to have windows and different types of, you know, inside spaces, but more importantly, outside spaces and how they're interacting with just the mall area. And so that's kind of really where I want to try to figure out between now and next meeting is as we evolve into a decision of, you know, we approve this different mix of uses, but these are the goals as we see this unfold into a space. And we'll clearly see them for any special permit use. But we have a site plan in front of us now and I think it's important to identify, not necessarily the, you know, concrete specifics, but much, much more importantly, the goals of really what we want to see moving forward.
Thank you, Krista. Member Spahoe.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm very happy to see that something's being done with the building. We've all seen with the pandemic and the changes in retail habits that something has to be done with it and has to be repositioned and re, I guess, redeveloped. And I'm glad to see that this building is being looked at and excited to see what we, what you guys come up with. My question is about the relationship with Simon. Do you guys work in conjunction with Simon when you're picking tenants? Or is there just an Hudson Bay working like independently on who they pick? Could, could there be, you know, friction or competing types of businesses that, that may go against like the vision of what Simon has? I just wondered how that relationship works.
Simon is part of a JV that controls the, the asset. So everything that we do is discussed with Simon. However, the overall say ultimately comes to us as being the groundless or we call it the tenant of the asset. So there, there's certainly elements at the table every single time. Not necessarily just on this asset, but multiple assets as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I'm Elara.
Hi, thank you. I have a few questions that are sort of unrelated to one another. A bunch of different things that popped into my head as you spoke. Will you be seeking a liquor license for the restaurant use? Or is that more of a coffee type thing that you envision?
We, we haven't really identified a user for the FMB. But if there is a user identified that is requiring a liquor license in order to succeed, then obviously we'll appear and request for that.
Right, to us, I was just, it was more of a curiosity question. Will you be providing us with a rendering of the building at one of our future meetings?
Absolutely. Once we have a design finalized, we intend on appearing before you, right, to give you the overalls of what the touch and the building would look like.
Will you be maintaining the entrances to the mall? There's two right now, one on the first floor, one on the second floor. Do you intend to keep those or close them off?
As we say right now, the intent is to keep them. It's beneficial for us and for the, call it the future. The sort of the, let's say of the building, right, to have that connection to the mall. It provides wide array of amenities that, you know, it really would be a shame if, you know, we end up with somebody that, you know, basically says, no, I'm not interested in that. I think that would defeat the whole purpose.
Okay. Since it is going to be primarily office use, will you be seeking to restrict some of the parking spaces for just those, that tenant? Because I wonder, you know, if, if you're a business moving in there, do you want your employees sort of fighting with mallgoers for parking? Or are you looking to have designated parking?
We are under an REA, just as any other anchors within the mall would be under. So we share the parking field collectively with the other anchors. So we, we're not going to have the ability to designate parking just for our, for our use. But to follow up on that, to be honest with you, because if this turns into office, right, because of the hours, the likelihood is, you know, these employees of that office were likely to come in earlier.
You'll get there first. That's true.
I can't help that, but I'm certain that there will be discussion, right, around, you know, where should they park and what have you? So it's an evolution of the negotiations, right, as, as the mall evolves.
Okay, I think it would be important for you.
To know that any parking that you did seek to have designated parking, that's something that I think would have to come back to this board. Am I correct?
Okay. Okay, let's addition it that way.
Two more, two more things in there, more, well, a question and a thought. I have long thought, and this may not be for you because it might be owned by Simon, but that alley, the only thing I can call it, that sort of runs between this building and the mall where our house furniture is, would make a lovely little park. Rip up that ugly, it's not very wide, but you could certainly have grass and some benches there. It's not used for deliveries as far as I can tell. I don't really know what it's used for. There is an entrance there that goes into the mall itself. So again, I don't think that's for these guys, but just wanted to throw it out there that it would be a great place to make it a green space and your employees could go out there and eat lunch.
100% support it. One of the discussions with, that we had early on in term, and we didn't really discuss it with Simon as of yet, is how to activate that alley. It's one of the few mall anchors that actually is not fully connected to a typical mall. We sit almost proud of the mall by 20 feet, which actually gives us a great opportunity, like you said, to activate what, you know, almost like a dead end corridor. Nobody goes there unfortunately.
Right, yes.
It's right next to a loading dock on one side, next to, yeah, 100% agree with it.
Right, but you could do something great.
Interested in that, I think. Father, I think there's.
If we're not ready to reach an agreement with Simon, we absolutely something that we've entertained.
Great, I think, great.
I think there's also another alley on the other side that isn't used for deliveries that goes, that's in between. Yeah, so I think, you know, maybe between both of those opportunities.
Great.
Just throw my two cents.
Then the other thing is more of a curiosity for me. 85% of this is going to be office space. We keep hearing from other developers that office space isn't filling. That's why they're all interested in turning their buildings into lab space.
So I'm curious as to why you think that this is different and will attract office users where some of the other buildings in town have the opposite view?
100%, it's a great question. Thank you for putting me on the spot. So actually, I was in the market on Tuesday. We went everywhere from Watertown, right, you know, down to driving all the way to, you know, up to Braintree, to Neat, down to Burlington to truly understand what the office market looks like. And, you know, if you go back, you know, maybe call it six, seven years ago, right, there was nothing at Watertown, right? It started with one building and then, you know, all the life sciences started migrating there because it became hot. You know, part of that is because of an aging office market that, you know, developers have not invested in and brought up to the 21st century with, you know, old, old and tired buildings, right? And no amenities nearby. In here, we believe that we're different, right? We were fortunate enough, right, to have an asset that sits right at the mall with all the amenities that you ever want, you know, as a, as an office user, right? Okay, we intend on, you know, with the right tenant, to actually fully develop this to the highest and best use. You know, what, what you're hearing from, from others, you know, I believe in them, I'm not certain obviously, is only reflects the amount of investment that they're trying to put into their asset. Which to a certain extent, you know, they're valid in doing that. But we believe based on our positioning that we probably are able to do something better.
Okay, thank you. One last comment, and it's really more for staff. An applicant said.
This is an important element of the repositioning of the mall. I really wish that the mall would tell us what their repositioning is. We need to get them in here and have them communicate with us because I still feel like there's a plan that we're not aware of. And it's not an accusation to you and it has nothing to do with the applicant. It's just, I feel I need to voice that, that we've been begging the mall for years now to explain to us what their long-term plan is and they're not.
We have had some very good conversations through the Mass Development Project. So I think you will be seeing and hearing things over the next. The big setbacks with COVID, a lot of rethinking, what I think. We'll be seeing a lot. We also spoke with some of Lord &amp; Taylor and Mado, Mado Doss through the Mass Development Project and I.
Okay. It's just something that a lot of people in town are concerned about. Everyone wants to know what's going to happen with the mall. And it, it should be a conversation and as I know I've expressed this before, what I don't want is for Simon to come to us with a fait accompli and say, here's what we want. We want them to engage with us early in the process so that we can work on it together.
Well, I think, I mean, you have, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. But I think, you know, we've, we've come to the table with Simon, with Macy's, and now you have Hudson Bay at the table. So I think it's an absolutely prime opportunity in 2022 to really hit the ground running.
Okay, thank you and thank you for answering all my questions.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments?
Yes, it's interesting. I see the mall manager from time to time. He knows who I am and so forth. We stop and say hello and not too long ago, I said to him, you know, we see all these changes with these malls and some of them closing and so forth. And, you know, I was just wondering whether you people have any plans? He said, our plan is to stay here. He says, we're a regional mall. And he says, we're very successful. And he says, our only real competition. He said, they supersede all of the smaller malls around. In other words, they're not really the competition for the Burlington Mall. He said, they're competition. There's a mall that's been there forever on the road that goes from Boston to Worcester. And that was the first really big mall. And he said, see, he said, they're where we usually consider our catchmentary 25, 25 miles. And he says, they're just beyond that. But he said, that's our, we consider them our only real competition. So he said, you know, we're here with us. I said, thank you, I'm glad to know that.
Aren't you?
Of course.
He actually, oddly enough, Simon had a phenomenal quarter. You know, in general, on CNBC, they came out with their reports and they actually had a very robust quarter considering everything. And, and actually Mike hit, hit it right on the head of my, my question was, does Simon control the asset? And they do, which brings me a little bit of comfort to know that, you know, it's going to be in conjunction with Simon. And I would imagine Simon's going to have control over whether that gets closed off to the mall or if it remains open to the mall or, you know, the, the entrance or exits through, through the mall. But I, I think it's, you know, as long as they have final say, I think, I think, you know, we, we probably don't have too much to be concerned about with this.
Anyone else? This is a public hearing. Does anyone from the public have any comments on this item? Seeing no one?
Madam Chair, can I make one other mall-related comment? Of course. I just want to give a shout out to, I went by to the new downstairs where Sears used to be. Carol Perna, thank you for working with me to get that entrance to the parking lot. It looks great, it's nice and wide and it means people will be parking on the Sears side. I can't, I'll probably always call it the Sears side. It looks great and I'm really glad that we fought for that, so well done, board.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please? Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this to the Planning Board meeting of December 3rd, 2021.
Sorry for that title, that should be the second.
Oh, December 2nd, sorry.
Second.
All is a favor.
Aye.
opposed? Thank you, folks, for coming this evening. We'll see you next meeting.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you, good night.
Item I is a continued public hearing. Application for approval of the site plan, 600 Summit Drive, Jones Lang LaSalle for Millipore Sigma.
Good evening, folks.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Mark Gifford with Millipore Sigma.
Neil Foley, JLL.
Thank you. Staff, do you want to start off with some comments?
Do we have comments, Krista?
Sorry. Just trying to figure out the best photo to show. You know, the Patriots have lain today, right? Started 10 minutes ago. Anyway, the, the board, so last meeting, we had some questions. I think, I don't know, we got a little off track, but questions about what this was, a lot of questions about kind of premature to Board of Health. They have been to the Board of Health since. The Board of Health had a very good dialogue. I know Liz sent out the link, if anyone watched the meeting. Offered a bunch of comments on the system and this building outside. We've had good conversations. I, I think Millipore, Millipore sits in 350,000 square feet. There's, it's a big building, they do a lot of stuff, a lot of good stuff. I mean, they're kind of the, I don't know, I, I, it's probably not exactly correct, but it's the way I think about it is kind of, you know, Millipore is, they made all the stuff that made things possible, like the, you know, a person who made the shovel in the gold rush. They just have a lot of that equipment, a lot of things that make a lot of other things possible, which is very exciting to have them here in Burlington. And just to the question, I just wanted to hit straight on the question of kind of the building itself. I did have a conversation with the, with the Board of Health Staff of just kind of the question of, are we going to be seeing a lot of these buildings? And I think, you know, the size, the size of Millipore is so unique to, relative to the size of other things. It's, anyway, she assured me that it's not, you know, you were, you know, allowing this outbuilding and then they're going to see outbuildings everywhere. It's, there's very unique circumstances with this.
Who assured you? Who was it that assured you?
The Board of Health Staff.
Thank you.
Anyway, and the things that came up at the bill, at this meeting, at the Planning Board of the last meeting were really kind of where this is situated. I think there was some confusion there. The fencing and screening and vegetation, we wanted to talk more about that. We've talked with the applicant about it. The, this is, if you see the building in the background, it's the, the. The, this is, if you see the building in the background, it's the, the building 200. And then this, the building in the foreground is 400, 600, the edge right there.
Four and six.
Um, and there's the, a green space, um, that's right next to the building. That actually, this, this green space and, um, treat area was parking. It was supposed to be parking that they're, they held in reserve when we first permitted that. And you guys had asked if you could hold it in reserve, hold it in reserve. Not necessarily where they're putting this unit, I mean, the, this building, but the, the green spaces behind it. So I just wanted to credit that, you know, when you ask and, you know, the, the use itself didn't need as much parking. It's nice to have the screen space, um, and especially a lot of the wooded green space next to it. I'm getting off track. Anyway, so we've, we've talked to the applicant, um, about fencing options, um, screening options. I, I think one of the things we need to talk about tonight is, uh, they do need a fence around the unit. They had initially proposed a silver chain link. We said chain link must be black, but we also suggested that the walls that are visible from the parking lot in this area potentially be a solid wall, whether it's a privacy fence or some other type of solid masonry wall, um, just on, on the side that you can see, um, from, from traveling around the site. Uh, it's something we want to discuss tonight as well as we, they had proposed arborvitae along, around some of it. We just wanted to make sure we were having fuller screening. If Liz, you can go to the generator? The generator, this generator actually, um, is much taller than the unit that, than the unit that, can you go back to the generator?
Sure, but this is actually that generator.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
That is the gen, so you're looking at the generator.
So can you do an aerial?
I can, yes.
The generator, just wanted to quickly say that the generator itself is much taller than the unit that they're proposing. So this is taller than what we will, um, be seeing the building. But we wanted to just point out the arborvitae types that were around this that we'd like to see around, um, another type of more fenced area. Um.
Where is the unit that they're actually posing though on these pictures?
Is it going?
Yes. Where's it going? For rendering? Well, or even just tell me where it's going to go.
So if you go back to the, go back to the grass picture, are you, can you go back? Oh, so right, it's pretty much actually.
In front of the generator?
Is that accurate?
Your cursor was as accurate. It's in the, uh, correct, in the sunny.
Forward.
Forward of the generator.
Closer, much closer to the parking lot because it would need to be, um, where the, the transportation would come in. With that, otherwise, um, the Board of Health discussion was fantastic. I think they hit on a lot of things that came up at the last meeting that were really in their wheelhouse. So at this meeting tonight, what we really want to nail down is just really the, the building, what's around the building, the fencing, the vegetation. And with that, we, nailing down that, we don't have any other issues necessarily. So, um, I would suggest the applicant weigh in with anything else that I haven't discussed.
Please do.
We, we think you have a fine fiduciary in your Board of Health. We had a very productive meeting. They issued 10 conditions, which we will comply with. And, and certainly receptive to your comments prior relative to aesthetics. And we're happy to work with you on what you feel is appropriate and consistent with what we've done. Understanding we are no longer a tenant, we own the building. That one area that you referred to, uh, that was reserved for parking. We have an interest in making a patio out there, which was part of the original permit. And the reason that's pertinent is, we have an interest in whatever's out there being appropriately screened and aesthetically pleasing, along with other elements of the building also.
I want to become clear on the positioning of this. When I walk at the, your property lot, you come in and go around the back that's facing 95 in this big parking lot there. And when I saw this, I said, this is perfect. You just took what you wanted and put it up against the building, cleaned it up a little bit. And I said, what a perfect solution.
Well, well, thank you. We, we actually had seven sites that we originally considered that were compliant relative to the setbacks. And we, we got it down to three. And then we met informally with the board and the building department and the fire department for their input. And we, it was a collaborative effort to really get to the spot that we're advocating for now.
Well, it's nice when we're looking for something and you're looking for something and it all comes out well, I think.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think I missed something here. So at the last meeting, I, I, I didn't think that this container was a fait accompli. It's, it appears to be the case now. I may have missed a meeting or something. I don't think I did. So I, I'm just concerned that we're, we're jumping the gun here. The Board of Health certainly has, you know, their, their focuses and their expertise. But that, uh, the conversations that we all had in the board here was, was, was completely different to that. So, um, I think we, I don't know who's, who said that this is a done deal, but I, I'm not of that impression. So I'd just like to maybe hear from the rest of the board if that's the case. But I, I think I might have, something might have skipped. I, I was been, you know, looking at that and talked about, you know, there's, there's a business case that's one particular business unit wants their space back, which basically houses what this does internally. And I think it's a, um, kind of a fundamental issue that we have. We may not see the size of these around town because of the size of, of Millipore Sigma. But we're going to be seeing the little ones because we got the, we got buildings that would be, you know, smaller in size that need these, but the buildings that we have to approve, I think. And there's been a lot of work on the, the Millipore Sigma building that if this wasn't identified at the beginning with, we, we totally missed the ball on that one. So I think, I think we are, uh, have to kind of think as planners here and think about what, what we're doing here now. And then for the, for the rest of the life science buildings, we're going to have these little tiny units, depending on if each business unit or each company within these multiple, multiple companies within a building is going to have to have their own. So I think, I think we're, we're still in discussion on that, but I'd like to hear from the rest of the board. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Yeah, the good, good point that Bill raised. And, and what, what I had thought, Bill, um, while you were talking, is that there are many different business units, uh, in, in, in a large building that we should make sure that each of those business units doesn't have their own outside container. But it appears that, um, the Board of Health would prefer this. Am I, did I get the wrong impression out of there? That they would rather have a hazardous waste storage place outside? And also the fire department is?
From what I understand from the discussion with the Board of Health as well and consultation with the fire department is for, um, what this, um, this company, or not company, but they would prefer this to be separate and outside the building, mostly for, um, flammable storage, not necessarily, I mean, it's not really a hazardous.
Is this flammable storage?
I think it's both, right?
Okay, it's both.
Yeah, I mean, what, what's in this type, as I mentioned at the meeting preview, what we're talking about here is, um, let's see, what did I talk about? In terms of, um, you know, ethanol and isopropyl alcohol, hydrogen peroxide and other ethanol hydrochloric acid, hydrogen peroxide acids and bases, many used in cleaning of equipment, some of which are flammable and require unique safety requirements, um, apart from the main building. So, um, I know in discussion with the applicant, they can certainly, um, explain better than I can. But, uh, there's just some issues with some of, um, the flammable storage needing different types of electrical, um, or distance from electrical or, yeah, I'm not, I shouldn't even try. If I may ask the applicant to, um, talk about some of the challenges that were interior, um, to the building. But I will say, just based on the question that was asked, that, um, the Board of Health as well as the fire department did prefer this type of, um, unit be ex, this type of storage be exterior to the building in this case.
And just from a, basically from a, a layman's perspective, if there are a, a whole bunch of laboratories in a, in a building, I would think it would be better to have all the hazardous, flammable materials stored in, uh, in one place. I don't.
They could be inside.
I was going to say, if they're being stored, it's, there's, if they're stored outside, they're also being used inside. And there's obviously a certain amount inside, which is still flammable.
True, true. Good point, good point.
Just thinking on both sides here.
Yep, yep. No, good point. Uh.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Please.
I share Bill's concern. I, um, understand that Millipore is unusual and it's unusually large building. But I also think that this need was due to poor planning. And I think that with smaller lab spaces, this may be more likely because they don't have as much space to store things properly inside. And I think we may see more of these. I prefer that it is not in a separate trailer unit, and I will not be voting in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I watched the Board of Health meeting and it was like, um, it went very smoothly and, uh, they seemed very happy with it. I, again, uh, a lot different than the tone in our meeting. And the fire department also, I guess, liked the access from all, around both sides. My, I mean, my question, and maybe this is to staff, is how do we prevent this from happening in the future with future oversights? And how do we get approvals on plans and site plans and building plans? So that, you know, down the line, these are, don't become commonplace. I mean, I, I know they've probably done their due diligence and this is the best solution. And what's happened has happened, but how do we, uh, prevent this in the future? Or minimize these things all over town is what I have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So.
Yeah, um, trying to think of how to answer it. I think, based on the evolution of, I think, the, the classi, not classifications, the, this, what's the word I'm looking for? Anyway, sorry. We're usually on the same page.
I don't know where you're going, but I'm on board.
So there's so many regulations that cover all these things. And the, those regulations, in terms of what you need to do to meet those regulations, including building code. And I'm a little out of my element, so forgive me. But, um, been learning a lot about a lot of things in the last couple of weeks, um, just about this. But, including building code, that there's a certain point where you can't, we're never going to be able to, just, I mean, just look at water treatment. We're never going to be able to do everything perfectly right in the beginning. When we're looking at retrofitting buildings, and I've asked this question, like, what do we need to make sure when we're retrofitting buildings for different types of uses? How we make sure we do it so, so we don't have, you know, just all these little things out and about?
Excuse me, would you please mute yourself if you're online?
But at the same time, you still have things like, um, you know, generators and transformers. And, and there are things that are part of doing business. And I think there's a balance between, you know, none of us like generators and none of us like where they plop down transformers. And, um, that there's, what's that balance in terms of what we need to have on the landscape and to support other businesses? And how can we do it the best way we can? And I think in an instance like this, you know, we have this exterior building. How can this exterior build, like, how can we make it the best we can make it? How do we think about, if you do need exterior storage, what should it look like? So I think this, in this case, what can we do to start modeling and thinking about if, if this comes up? We don't want everyone to have a whole bunch of little exterior outdoor storage areas. If, oh, if it's, if this is industry, becomes more industry standard, which we don't control necessarily, how do we make it work best for Burlington? I don't know the answer. All I know is how do we make it look and feel the best for the landscape?
That sounds like we're giving up the fight. How are we going to make all these tiny little storage containers more palatable? Um, it's not palatable.
Can I, can I ask my fellowmen, what's wrong with having a separate storage building for hazardous material? If it looks better, okay?
Madam Chair, if I may, so what, what the, from what I understand here and all the conversations in the, in the testimony that was provided previously, there's a business unit in the building that has the facility for this. It's already there.
Okay.
They just want their space back. So it's, it's a, it's an internal discussion.
Irregardless of that.
So the building was made with that in place.
Say they came to us with the building design the way it is and the outside hazardous waste storage.
So I think that kind of goes to Kristin's.
That's what I'm, yeah.
In the future. What I'm addressing right now is what we have here in the testimony. So that's what I'm basing it on.
Okay, take your, right, okay, okay, understand.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Well, in this particular, I mean, I leave it to the applicant. I'm, I'm not the applicant. I'm just trying to tell you in general what I'm trying to learn from what we're seeing.
Ed? There was a couple of things that, you know, if I recall correctly, and please, by all means, somebody correct me if I'm wrong. The existing space in the interior of the building, um, was it not up to code? Or there was something going on with the flooring? Is, was I hearing that right?
It was electrical. So this is a, no, it's there, right? And, but the, the, the one business unit, which is in the same company, wants their space back. It has that facility right there, that everything is up to code in that space.
Okay, and everything is up to code in the interior space?
We currently have a Class 1 Division 1 space in the building where we're holding these materials.
And everything is up to code?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Members may have.
Just to follow up, but thank you, Madam Chair. What Kristin said in, what we're doing here in Burlington is, you know, we're taking all these, with this, you know, the new platinum, uh, life science rating and our push towards making, uh, Burlington more life science friendly. We're taking a bunch of office buildings and now making them lab space. So I would argue that the potential for this coming up in the future is going to be huge because we've got a bunch of offices that are going to all of a sudden have lapped and they're not going to have designated planned spaces for hazardous materials. And they're going to say, hey, look what they did up at Millipore. Why don't we just put an external and it'll just become commonplace? So my initial question was, if there's something we have to change in the bylaw or if there's something we have to, um, require, and maybe this might be up to the building department and building code to require that when we change all these offices and to lab space that, that we minimize the, the, because I think we're going to start seeing these everywhere now. Or I hope, I'm afraid.
I agree.
I hope we don't. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Uh, does anyone on the board have any other questions?
Just, you know, the, the process produces materials that are hazardous or whatever that not wanted. And everybody has a bathroom in the house, you know? There are, you know, there's a separate room and there it is. And when I looked at this and they said, the, what they thought, easy solution for them. Put a, um, as, uh, Mike said, it looks like a storage, regular storage thing. Just stick it outside, put a door in it, and you could do that.
We have to know that.
Excuse me, just going to finish. And, uh, so I thought, when I saw this, I said, they're just, rather than having that a separate building, you, you're going to have to have something, you know, or they're not going to be able to operate in Burlington. And that's not going to happen. So I thought out of what we had seen so far, that to me, as I said, when I looked at it, I said, yeah, instead of having a separate building outside, like a container building, they just moved it in with the, with the main building. And that's a nice looking building and I don't think it, it, you know, denigrates the use of this.
It's not going to be in the main building. It's going to be a separate container, the unit. They're not showing, they're not showing it on, they're not showing it.
That's existing.
That's before.
Right, they're not showing it on there, Paul. It's going to be a separate container building.
I thought that's what they were going to do.
Just put it outside that.
So I think, you know.
I would say just doing that.
Doing, putting it in.
Making it look like.
An addition.
Make it look like part of the building, rather than having a separate unit. Put something like this.
I'm just not.
The only, the only problem that. The only issue I see with that is that, I guess technically it could be, I don't know, maybe, you know, with a complex building, maybe there's multi-facets to the building. There's office space within the building, there's, uh, storage space, you know, hazardous storage space within the building, there's a kitchen within the building. There's, you know, uh, refrigeration within the building. So at what point do we say, okay, maybe they got a huge refrigeration room and they say, well, let's put the refrigeration outside the building now. say, well, let's put the refrigeration outside the building now so we can use that as office space, right? And, and, you know, and maybe we'll take the kitchen, we'll move that outside into a separate thing so that we can use that as office. Basically, it's expanding the building to something that it was never meant to be from the get-go. So, I mean, you know, you could, you could have utility, huge utility rooms, or, you know, mechanics rooms, you know, where all kinds of mechanicals are, and they could say, well, let's take them out of there, and we can now use that as office, we can put those on the outside, and we'll do, so, in other words, it's almost a can of worms, in a sense, and I get it. It's a, it's a, it's an intricate component of your building, just that now that component that was your building, that was part of your building, is now gonna become office space, which enhances the size of your existing office space, and now puts this as an accessory building on the outside. At what point do we, you know, like you said, I think we've had people come before us and say, we need to put all our refrigeration of the building in the back now, we need to move the refrigerators out of here, move it in the back. What does it effectively do?
I think that's completely different, Joe, because refrigeration, I got a refrigerator in my house.
No, yeah, but no, what, what...
So, refrigeration is not hazardous. The things that they're talking about are things that you don't want near you.
Right.
You don't want it in a place where they can possibly be disposed within the building.
I understand their, I understand their reasoning. They do have accommodation for it within the building right now, but they're gonna use that space now to make as office space.
I don't care what they're gonna, they can make a dance studio in it if they want.
Right, but what you're saying is, what, my point is, Paul, here it's hazardous, but, you know, you could say the same thing about refrigerator. You could, you could then move the refrigerators into a separate outdoor, you know, trailer, and then say, okay, now we'll take that and make, effectively, you just keep on growing your, your square footage of your building in a way that, you know, all around town. If we do that in every building of the town, we've now just, and you've made huge difference to the square footage.
Yeah, but other buildings in terms don't have the kind of disposal problems that these people have.
No, but we have been asked by other people to move the refrigeration out into, into separate units like that as well. And it's, it's effectively the same thing. Well, in other words, they have the accommodation inside right now, they just wanna use that as something different.
So, I'm gonna interject. I think that, you know, we've got four members that don't seem that they're gonna be on board. We have seven members collectively. I think that maybe we need to go back to the drawing board, because I don't think you're gonna get the outcome that you want this evening. And I'd rather say that to you and be very upfront, rather than, you know, us denying you and then you having to wait a period of time.
Well, so, I guess to follow through with my thought process, and I, I think it's been said by a couple of different members, I think we need to...
Joe, draw it, because that's what you do best.
I'll draw it, exploding on the outside or catching fire on the outside. No, I, my point is, I think it needs to be considered, you know, whenever we make a change like this, we can't say we're making a change to one building, because once we make a change to one building, you know, we've got thousands of buildings in the town, we can, we, we have to make accommodations for every building that comes forward. So, I think we need to think that process out and say, okay, how will that affect, possibly, depending on the size of these outdoor storage facilities, or maybe two or three in each one of these buildings, how does that affect our overall square footage on these sites? And, you know, the density of the sites and the, you know, everything. And not necessarily with just this building, with the building next door, and the one next door to that, and the one next door to that, and the one next door to that. So, I, I'm not, I'm not necessarily sitting here saying, I wanna say no. I just wanna think out what the repercussion would be if, if this became a widespread precedent, you know, a precedent that created a widespread desire throughout the town to do similar things.
Thank you. Members, may I?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And a member of him had just said what I was saying. I'm not necessarily against this for Millipore, I understand. And I think from what I took from our initial meeting last time, which might be a point of confusion now, where it is now, it is not an approved use for where you have the storage now because of the electric. Is that what happened? Because I think we're, we're a little, we're muddy, it's kind of a little muddy now, and you can't have, you can't keep it there. I took from the last meeting that you can't keep it there because it was too close to electrical or something, if you can clarify.
I, I, I'm at a little disadvantage because I don't have our EH&amp;S person here.
Okay.
And, and when our experts spoke with your experts, they were all very comfortable with what we are doing is completely compliant, and what we're proposing to do is an improvement to what we're doing, and it is, benefits employee safety and workplace safety, and it's an improvement in best practices.
But my question was more to, what you have now, is it against code or not safe?
Okay, you said it was...
It's fine, it's fine.
You said everything was...
Oh, okay.
And, and, and I, you know, I wanna reiterate where we were last week or last time we met, is we'd like to work with you folks, but, but clearly, an internal audit on our end showed a better way to manage the hazard materials. And Fire Department, Board of Health, other, other groups and experts identified this as, as a, a good solution. And you, you've got some issues with it, I understand. I, I'm not sure going back to the drawing board is appropriate. I'd like to rework where we are and see if we can work through these issues.
So, I think, I think that the point of contention is, is it's, in essence, a shipping container. So, if you, if you potentially made a separate building that was separate in a far, you know, or, or an attachment to the, well, I think, my understanding is that both the Board of Health and the Fire Department felt that it was better if it was separated from the existing building. So, if it was that, and it wasn't a shipping container, it was a separate building, or, or an attachment, that was, you know, some type of addition, that would align with, you know, what the building looks like, I think you'd have more support. And I think at one point, you know, I, I'm pretty sure I asked for some type of rendering of what this would look like. And instead, we got a picture of the building and some green space, and kind of an arrow pointing, and this is where it's gonna go. So, trying to get behind, because again, you have to remember, all we're thinking of is shipping container, trees around it, that's, it's not even...
It's a highly specialized constructed building for purpose-built. And to meet these conditions are difficult, and this is what this building does. If you gave us conditions, as the Board of Health has, and you said that it has to sit within the building aesthetically, we can match the color of the building, as we did with the generator, we can fence it and screen it so you can't see what's behind there if you happen to not like a horizontal box, we can certainly put some renderings together for your approval.
But you currently have it inside, and it's too code, and it works, correct?
You're moving hazardous waste through the building more regularly than is preferred. You are storing it, you are...
Why was it planned that way? Why wouldn't it have been on the outside?
I can't speak to where we were five years ago. What, what I can tell you is, we, as we continually do, Millipore is one of those companies that you referred to earlier in your opening statement at the meeting today, that we're recognized as, as a great employer and a great place to work. And in doing internal audits, we strive to improve practices. This was identified by our EH&amp;S folks, and, you know, we've pursued this internally as, as a better practice.
So, this is being done at all of your facilities that you have everywhere?
No, it, it's, it's, this is specific to, I mean, yeah, I have to give Bobby Young and our EH&amp;S folks, Lisa Hartman that preceded him, and we, we have global audits, and the team comes through the building, and they work with the regional folks, and they said, you know, you can actually do a better job here if you...
I guess, my, so my question is, you, all of you, you have, I mean, it's, Millipore's huge, right? You've got facilities everywhere, I would imagine. You've gotta, you've gotta be generating hazardous waste in other locations. Does this global audit address those buildings as well? Are you doing this in all of your buildings?
We handle the materials differently in different jurisdictions, in different buildings. The group, one of the groups that's in our building now had an exterior unit when they consolidated to Burlington, and they're the, the group that now has one on the inside. There are other units, or other buildings in different areas that have internal facilities.
And they're not changing? So, in other words, you're keeping your status quo in many of your facilities?
I, I, I can only speak to Burlington.
And I understand that you don't like the idea of it being brought through the building, although, as Brenda pointed out, it's being used in the building and being transported out of the building to get to this unit as well. I would be amenable to you moving it within your building to an outside wall, so, and you could even have a fire door or something in, in between for safety. I think there are ways it can be done that don't involve a shipping container or even an additional building. That's another building. We didn't permit another building here. So, I, I, I'm...
I mean, I'm, I'm a bit confused. Are you saying that if we took a purpose-built building and put it adjacent to the current building, extending the footprint with an opening?
That's not what I'm saying.
That it would be all right as opposed to, we're trying to distance it from the building on purpose?
That's not what I'm saying.
Yeah, I can comment on the EH&amp;S audits, I've done some, okay? So, what you do in these audits is you go in and you look at the process, and you look at the documentation, and you say, how can, how can we improve it, right? And you, you come up with, not the people doing the audit, but they say, you know, if you didn't have to walk here, and you didn't have to walk here, you could, it probably would be a little bit better. So, then the people there say, ah, this is what they came up with, what they call a continuous improvement activity. It's not a deficiency, meaning it's not, not to code, right? You know, they look at these things, it's saying, can we improve it? And you look at these improvement projects, and you say, well, you know, maybe we can do that, maybe we can do this, it's gonna cost us much, maybe not, it's a nice-to-have type of thing. And that's what I, that's what happens on these internal EH&amp;S audits. And they say, well, maybe we can put a building outside, maybe the team came up with that idea, said, that's a great idea, let's do it.
Mr. Gaffey, as, as, I mean, that is exactly the scenario.
Yeah.
And, and the fact of the matter is, we're trying to err on the side of caution and safety as opposed to aesthetic.
If I can continue, and then when you look at those ideas, you say, maybe you can do them, maybe you can't.
Right.
Right. You go through a solution matrix, and they had the first solution matrix, and the second one was, keep it as it is, and maybe change some things around internally. So, there's, there's options here, folks.
So, according to...
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I'm not sure where we are right now, because I'm, I'm, I think we're prepared to vote, and yet, I think the applicant said he wants to come up with a different solu-- I'm not sure if you're wanting to come up with a different solution to present to us, or if you want us to vote on this.
I, I don't, I, I don't know the implications of a vote, what, we feel this is the best solution for the conditions we have, and we'd like to work collaboratively with the board. If, if you've said no, that's not a possibility, I, I don't know what the next avenue for us is. I don't know if the door's shut and it never reopens. I, I wouldn't think that's the case, that, that isn't what I've experienced sitting in the meetings, you know, over the last month or two. So, I, I actually look for direction from, from the rest of the board on how we work through this.
So, I, I think, I don't think you're, you're getting a positive vote on, on the design as it stands. I would say you could either withdraw, we can continue, or we can vote as-is. So, if you withdraw, you can come back. If we deny, then they have two years, right?
Unless it's substantially different.
Unless it's substantially different, all right? Or you can continue, and, and, you know, we can work with staff and...
I, I think we, I feel I have no choice but to continue at this point.
Okay.
Because I, I, I don't have the expertise to understand the ramifications of, and I appreciate the guidance.
I completely understand. I'm the first one.
Just add one thing. And I, speaking for myself, not the whole board, I'm not necessarily against this for Millipore. My concern is what happens down the line. The Board of Health did their due diligence, and for this project, and for them, this is great, and the same with the Fire Department. As planners, we have to look down the line to what is, what are the implications of this? This may be fine for you guys, and it may be, you know, great. Our, our purview is, what does this mean for us down the road, and what will we have to approve down the road, and what type of precedent does it set? So, for me personally, I'm not necessarily against this for Millipore. I know Millipore is huge, and it's a special circumstance, but just understand that we have to look towards what does this, what are the implications of this vote? And again, we're more than willing to work with you, and appreciate what Millipore does in the community and the standing, we just wanna make sure that for Burlington...
I'd like, I'd like to leverage that spirit going forward. Millipore, I've done this, I'm 65, I've done it my whole career, and Millipore is an exceptional company. I've only been there five years. I think you'll recognize that over time, and what they're proposing is reasonable, and I hope we can come to something that works.
I, I think we fully recognize that Millipore is an exceptional company. I don't think anyone questions that. I think, from our perspective, we need to take the whole town into consideration, and, you know, Millipore may, even in this instance, maybe, maybe it's fine for Millipore, but, you know, then we take somebody who may wanna do it, and they have another building, you know, somebody else's building right next to them, and, you know, how does that impact, even, quite honestly, in the worst-case scenario, an explosion? An explosion here doesn't necessarily mean it's gonna, if it's an explosion, it's gonna happen.
Well, we, we listened and heard you the first time, and it was aesthetics, and it was the precedent. It appears that we're still up against the precedent and the aesthetics. So, we hear you again. You know, I'd like to take it back to, to the experts and, and see how we address the aesthetics and the precedent, if we, in fact, can.
Thank you.
And maybe examples of what you've done in other Millipore facilities, I mean, maybe, I don't know.
Renderings would help. But this is a public hearing, is there anyone in the public that has a question, comment, concern that they'd like to share? Seeing no one? Madam Chair?
Madam Chair, is there a, a time limit on, on the continuance? If, if next meeting doesn't work for us, can we go past that?
Yes, I don't think...
Yes, you may, yes.
And you can choose that now, or you can wait till the second?
Yeah, you can email us at any time.
But if you know you're not absolutely gonna make the second, we could go back.
I, I think it would be inappropriate to take somebody else's slot.
Yeah, plus the holiday, you probably...
Yeah.
Yeah.
A lot of people out of office.
January.
I think January's...
Hold on, Jen has it, don't worry.
We don't have it, December 16?
January 8.
We're not, no, you don't mean December 16.
Oh, just one in December?
January, January 6 is the next meeting after December 2.
And, and our, our forum is with the Planning Board at this point, not the Board of Health.
That's correct.
Correct. You're correct. It is January 6.
And we, we work with Kristin as, as we have.
So, January, is January 6 good?
Is that where she was?
Yeah, I'm just trying to get something on the calendar, I, I don't know.
Yeah. You can always stay further if you need to.
I'm speaking for a group and not myself.
We appreciate you working with us on this, definitely. And we do appreciate Millipore, definitely.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter to the Planning Board meeting of January 6, 2022.
Second.
We're, it felt weird to say 2022.
I don't really feel that well. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
Have a good evening, folks. Thank you.
Item J is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a definitive subdivision. It's a plan for 4 Redmond Street. Murray Hills Incorporated is the applicant. Would you please introduce yourselves for the record?
Yes.[1763.41]
Phyllis Etzel, I'm here with David Romero, Commonwealth Engineering. We're representing Somerset, Wheel D Trust. And firstly, I'd like to apologize for taking up your time this evening. Kristen asked me to postpone to December 2nd. However, I just briefly wanted to say something, and I have a package for each of you that contains a proof plan. There are ten, there's two, there are seven plus two.
Excuse me, before we get into that, you know, I appreciate tenacity and, and your efforts and time in, in coming to the board, but, you know, you emailed us yesterday, and our staff has reviewed what they could. We had a very heavy agenda in front of us tonight, and, you know, the board clearly asked you back in June of 2020 to provide a proof, a proof plan and calculations. The plan and memo submitted yesterday was the closest thing that we've had to answering some of those questions, as to whether or not you could build this without the waivers. The board has been absolutely clear the whole way through that if the subdivision cannot be built without the waivers, we won't consider waivers. So the information received yesterday afternoon, including the new information regarding historic lot protection, is under review by the planning staff and other departments, including conservation. So I, I don't think that we're in a position to discuss anything, especially anything that you're presenting.
I'm not asking you to discuss anything. I mentioned that I would like to hand out these packages to the board members, and we did submit a proof plan, I'm not quite sure how many meetings ago, and that proof plan did show that we can build out the subdivision. However, we were asked at the last meeting to, once again, present a proof plan and a memo with calculations comparing, I'm not even sure what, what, in any case, that memo is in the package. And what I did want to say is, we have submitted this plan. I understand that staff would like to review it further, and I've asked Kristen to set up a meeting so that we can answer their questions, but you do have a proof, proof plan, and the question remains, is it a better subdivision with the waivers or without? Not granting the waivers will result in more stormwater to be handled on-site, reduced uplands for future homeowners to enjoy, an increased loss of native vegetation, loss of habitat, habitat and longstanding trees, a sidewalk that leads to an existing Redmond Street that has no sidewalks, and all of this with no advantage to the town, and lastly, a conservation commission that's ignored. We actually built those walls at the request of the Conservation Commission staff in order to reduce disturbance to the wetlands, and we worked very hard to develop a plan that could be acceptable to them. However, we could build it out without waivers, and I wanted to make that point, and as I said, I apologize for taking up your time.
Thank you. I, I think, like I said, staff and conservation would like to review what was submitted yesterday. We definitely need more time here.
That's wonderful.
And may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter to the Planning Board meeting of December 2nd, 2021.
Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
We'll see you on December 2nd, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is minutes. Has anyone, everyone had an opportunity to review October 21st and the October 7th meeting minutes?
Yes.
They have a motion? Oh, you have?
Can we take them together, or do we need them separately? Does anyone? Okay. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Are you all voting on them?
I think we're all voting on them, except Joe, but you're not voting on either, right?
Right.
I made amendments to the 21st one.
Joe Brady is aware he's made those changes.
You can take them together, you just can have separate votes on them.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes for October 21, 2021, and October 7, 2021.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Next up, master plan. Where are we at with that, Ms. Kristen?
So we, we, we have received a draft of the natural and cultural resources that, honestly, getting to today was a big job, getting to tonight, but I do want to just say that we will send it out over the holiday week to get a sense of where, where we are with some of these elements coming out. Liz and I are still working with Emily Innis to put everything back together, she's been doing a great job.
Great.
Thank you very much for your efforts on that. I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Same to you.
Thank you. And may I have a motion, please?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving.